Hey Fran, do you see me? Because I did, I hit the connection that you sent me and it's showing the Lurch Beach attendees, blah, 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 and I sit down on the bottom here and write Jeff Hindaliter, but I don't know, I don't know if I'm on there.
I see you.
You see me, so I'm all set. Okay, now, how do I know if you can hear me?
You can let him know.
You're echoing actually through your laptop right now.
Okay, so I'm on. All right, thanks Fran.
Bye.
Kenny, Louise is able to see you as well.
Louise?
Hi.
Hi. Hey Jen, how come it doesn't show me on there? Just shows... Am I supposed to see me on there too?
Um, you should, unless you have it blocked someplace. There's a, if you look to the, I think the upper right-hand side, the speaker view, gallery view, take a look there and click it.
It says share content participants and more. That thing?
No.
I don't know what you're talking about then.
What do you see for a camp? Do you just see yourself?
No, I see you and Louise on the bottom right, and then it says, it's a town screen, it says attendees of Lurch Beach, original 1880.
That's the shirt.
Now I'm all set.
Okay.
I don't know what happened, but I'm all set now. I see me in the bottom right.
Okay, well depending, everybody gets shifted in different spots.
Correct. I have you and Louise as my main page right now. Yes, very lovely ladies.
All right, I'm gonna step out.
Stop it Kenny.
Who was that?
Me.
Sean?
Jay.
Sean, you're lovely too.
Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, Mike.
Can you see me?
No.
Like can't see me either.
I'll leave you unmuted. Okay, so you'll be able to talk.
Sean's key. Hey Fran, if you can hear me, Sean's coming in all fuzzy. Everybody else is clear. For the background.
Part of that is an issue with Sean's background. The back part of my office isn't taking the picture.
Okay, no problem. You know what's kind of tough is that the words that we're speaking are coming out on the screens, coming right across everybody's, everybody's picture.
I can't hear Sean.
Okay, you're unmuted.
I think I got it now Jay. All right, good. Council is all set? I don't have Mike. I don't know where Mike is. Oh yeah, hold on, yep. I know, I don't have Mike either, hold on. He's in, but he's just not, there's no picture.
I don't think his camera's on. Mike's camera's not on, that's all.
There we go. Yeah, okay. Okay, we all set folks? Okay, good evening folks. I'd like to call the Town Council workshop to order at 6:33 PM on Tuesday, January 12th. The purpose of this workshop is to have a discussion to help us set and create an ordinance governing the sale of recreational marijuana and medicinal marijuana. Council chose to have this in this format so we could have the optimum input, given the situation we were dealing with with the COVID, and the best way to accomplish that was to have, have it in this format. So I thank Fran and Town Manager and Jen, his assistant to, for setting this up for, to make this happen. It was well done and we hope we can get what we want out of this workshop. We're going to try to limit the workshop to no more than two hours this evening. If we have to have an additional workshop or workshops, we will certainly do that. So this process is not going to be rushed by any means. Council's under no pressure to create this ordinance and get this in motion. So we want to make sure that we do this right and it's done thoroughly and in the best interest of the citizens and the businesses who are interested in having this. So with that being said, a good evening all once again. Mr. Mead, would you like to start or have Jeffrey start in us?
Thank you. I think, yeah, I just want to, all I really want to say is that I think that there's a number of examples out there in the state so far with respect to establishing ordinances for adult use marijuana. I think that gives us an advantage now at this point in time in terms of setting things up for the town of Lurch Beach. We will, I've had a chance to look at several municipal ordinances myself. And I think the template is set and, and we can take the best of experiences and craft something that works for the town of Lurch Beach. So Jeffrey Hindaliter, our planner, is going to initiate the program tonight, really just to talk about some of the areas which would be entailed, dissected, different portions of an ordinance that would be needed for the council to go through when you're drafting this ordinance. And we also have with us Town Attorney Mary Costigan, who would, can speak as well from her experience in terms of some of the issues that other municipalities have had to face. Mary's had the experience of working with several municipalities and assisting them in drafting their ordinance. So I'll turn it over to Jeffrey Hindaliter to begin the program.
Can everyone hear me?
I can.
Yep.
Okay, just the audio here is, is coming through. I'm actually, the only way I'm here is through reading, which is subtitles. So I'm having a bit of a difficult time with that. But if you can hear me, I can continue.
Go ahead Jeffrey.
Okay, so you all should have a memorandum that was sent out earlier today and what this memorandum, what I tried to do with this memo is really get to the heart of what the proposed ordinances will be and hit on some of the main questions that will help us develop the ordinances. And really what the objective of these, there's five different questions. And what the objective of these questions is, is to get some feedback from the council that we can use as guidance when we are developing the language for the ordinance. So what I'd like to do is to go through each of these five questions. I'll just read the questions and then below each question is just a little bit of, a little bit addition of additional information. I'll go through those bullets and then what I'd like to do is just hear what your thoughts are on each of these questions. So the first one, the first question is which adult use marijuana retail sales land uses should be allowed? Oh, thank you Fran for putting that up. And so state statute allows several types of adult use marijuana sales with the marijuana store being the type that's most consistent with the intent of the November ballot question. I won't read the next definition, but the bullet below it is the definition of marijuana. And basically what this says is that the folks who own a marijuana store can purchase the marijuana from certain types of marijuana locations, cultivation facilities, marijuana manufacturing, and then sell those, and then sell those products. And the interesting piece about this, and I'd just like to point it out to council, just to be aware, you'll see that this particular definition, which is one that's used in other ordinances throughout Maine, but there are different modifications to the, the standard or this particular ordinance. What's interesting about this though is it goes beyond the actual selling the, the plant that you smoke. What it gets into are marijuana products, which could be a gummy or some sort of other not, what we may not think of traditionally as how people use marijuana. Also immature plants and seedlings to cut. So I'd just like to point that out. There are other types of uses associated with adult use marijuana, but they're not the typical retail sales. They are more in the cultivation, the testing and manufacturing. Nonetheless, I wanted to bring this up to you all so you were aware of that. Then what we also have is medical marijuana storefronts. And basically a medical marijuana storefront is similar to the adult use retail, except you need to be a medical marijuana cardholder in order to purchase the product from these stores. But again, it's another use. When we look back to the November ballot question, it, it's, it was more specific to retail sale and it seems like the intent of that is, is more related to just the marijuana store. But they're all separate uses and I didn't want to assume what the council thought we should regulate. So that's why we posed this first question to you.
Jeffrey, your mic is off. Are you ready to get going again?
I'm not sure what's going on with Jeff. I know Jen's down there trying to help him with something, but I'm not sure what's, what's happening.
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I think he may have just come back online here.
There we go.
Jeffrey, you ready to go again?
Um, yes, yep. So sorry about that. Yeah, Jen's trying to help me out down here. We're having a bit of a problem with the sound quality. So what I'd like to hear is, is if the council agrees or that the type of use that we should regulate is the marijuana store use? Or should we add other uses to that?
I think Jeffrey, I think when we get through with the different sections here, I think we can go back and talk about some of the specifics.
Okay, so on to question number two.
I, I think so. Chair, Chair O'Neill, you think that's a good way to do it?
I would agree, yes. Yes, thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, sure. So question number two, and this is one of the more difficult pieces of this is, is where should adult use marijuana retail sales, assuming it's just the retail sales portion, be allowed? We, in your packets, you have a zoning map and because the location will likely be regulated by zoning, we thought that having our current zoning map in front of you will, would give you a better idea of where the zoning districts lie in respect to different locations in the town. So what we're seeking from the council is your thoughts on which zoning districts you should be allowed. And just so you're aware, currently medical marijuana land uses are allowed in the GV1 and industrial districts. And then one other additional note is that there will be other ordinance requirements that will have some control on location, such as distance to schools, child, childcare facilities. And it's just to note, but really one of the, the big pieces of this is where should this use be allowed to exist? Onto number three. How many adult use marijuana retail licenses should be allowed? The, the November ballot question included language that limits the number of licenses. And what we're wondering is what do you feel that maximum number should be? Then on to number four, the license selection process. So based on the initial interest in, in adult use retail sales, we certainly expect that there will be more requests for licenses than the, than what we set by the maximum number allowed. So what we'll need to do is, what we'll likely need to do is create some sort of selection process. One example of a selection process is it could be based on a rating system where specific criteria is established and points awarded for meeting the criteria. This would be similar to a competitive process, maybe kind of like a bidding process in some respects. Another selection process could be based on a lottery. It appears as though there are several different types of lottery processes, one being applicants are picked at random, that's one process. Another is a qualified lottery where applicants need to meet specific, a specific set of criteria before they're actually entered into a lottery and then the applicant's chosen at random. Assuming the proposal is regulated by zoning, there's a number of different factors that we would need to consider as part of this process. And, and, and how do we build that, the zoning into the selection process and the review? That's something that we'll figure out internally. Once we have a framework of what the council thinks a good selection process will be. But it's just something to be aware of. And just an example of that. One thought is that the review for these licenses would fall under the planning board's jurisdiction for the conditional use permit. That can be a fairly detailed permitting process for some folks. And it may require a fairly decent investment of money for folks upfront. And in the end, they may not even, they may make all this investment in time and they may not even make the cut for the selection process. Or for the final selection process. But it's just something to be aware of that there will be multiple pieces to the selection process, whatever that may be. I think, and Mary can probably discuss this more, I, I think there are different sorts of concerns with each of the selection processes. But with, when you limit the number of licenses, there needs to be some sort of selection process. First come, first served. I'm sure there may be other options, but it's, it's just something that I expect we'll have to work on as part of this ordinance. Finally is the performance standards. And we're asking the, the council which performance standards should be included in a proposed ordinance. Many of you are aware of it, just so folks that may be watching know what performance standards are is they're specific standards that are attached to a, a particular land use that in part mitigate the potential detrimental impacts of that the use may introduce to neighboring properties to the town and to the overall well-being of the folks that live here and the folks that visit here. So performance standards are a pretty important piece of, of ordinances in order to ensure that there's some structure to the use that exists. Adult use marijuana ordinances in Maine include performance standards such as separation distances from specific uses. For example, there may be a 750-foot distance that the facility must be from schools, childcare, parks, et cetera. Order management, security, signage, hours of operation, drive-through prohibitions, noise, et cetera. So there can be a number of different performance type standards attached to the use that the applicant will need to meet as part of their permitting process. And one final comment on this that I really haven't seen that much in the ordinances, but kind of thinking through is, is trying to think outside of the box with this. And, and maybe there are other items that we could require. For example, like a community relations plan where the applicant gives something back to the town on an annual basis. Maybe a neighborhood compatibility plan where the folks who review these proposals, which may very well be the planning board, would consider appearance and things that may go beyond zoning, just to measure compatibility from what actually exists on the ground today. So I just thought I'd mention that to kind of think, to allow you to think outside of the, the norm of what we see with some of these standards because these are some things that we, we could possibly add. And, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
To the chair.
Right ahead sir.
Yeah, just following up on Jeffrey's presentation and the points that he's brought up. Jeffrey, if we could just go back with respect to the licensing selection process, just one thing that I would want to add to, for the council to be aware of is whatever process is decided upon in terms of selecting, assuming that there's a limited number of licenses and it's not just anyone who qualifies can get a license. Whatever that number may be, to consider who would potentially be able to get a license. I think that the norm is that people, applicants would have to meet, first of all, get pre-qualified by the state. The state has its own licensing procedure. And so you would want to have the app, anybody who's to be considered as seriously as a provider here in Lurch Beach to already have gone through the state's process and been certified as meeting their standards that they have. And then I would assume potentially in addition to that, the town would have its own criteria or minimum qualifications with respect to being able to have a license here in town. And I think before a selection would be made among potential licensees, you'd want to make sure that any applicant met whatever standards you've already decided on before getting involved in, in the selection process. So that was one thing I wanted to point out. And then with respect to the performance standards that Jeffrey touched on in looking at some of the other ordinances around the state. Other municipalities have paid attention to and included in their ordinances issues around, more specifics around security measures that are required for the establishment, odor control. that are required for the establishment, odor control, ventilation. Jeffrey mentioned drive-through. I didn't think for the most part, drive-through is not permitted in in the municipalities that I saw that allow this. But in addition to that, they don't, many municipalities don't allow deliveries, where you can order ahead or order online or something through that retail establishment, and then that they deliver that. So that's another thing that you might want to consider. And then other ordinances cover signage, you know, what what kind of signage is permitted. So that's, those are some more issues around the whole notion of performance standards. And then the the other piece would be whether or not minimum distances between, if there's more than one licensee allowed, minimum distances between licensed establishments or minimum distances from designated facilities, whether that's daycare, schools, parks, whatever, that some community. So those are issues you may end up wanting to get involved with the details of. I think as we move, as you move forward, there's certainly an opportunity for you for you to take a look at other ordinances or to have an ordinance drafted between staff and council that you can then look at at a at a subsequent workshop. So Chair, would would you like to hear from Attorney Costigan about some some different issues, or would you want to have questions from council first?
Chair, at this point, thank you for that question. Just to set some ground rules, if we could, welcome to council to speak at any point, just address it through me so there's, so we can try to eliminate any confusion and speaking over each other. And as far as the attendees, I'm welcome all of you to speak as well. Or if you should have a question, please ask, you raise your hand. I'm with Fran in the office, I'm trying to monitor and moderate the meeting. Fran's going to try to pay attention to who raises their hand and in what order. So you all and all of you have the opportunity to speak and voice your concerns or ask your questions. So with that being said, council, are there any questions from you at this point?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Jay.
I I just, I think I I really agree with what the town manager said about the selection process. I don't, I don't think we should be even going further with an applicant if they haven't meet, haven't met the criteria that we want to bring them forward. I don't even think they should get to the lottery point or whatever, without, you know, meeting the criteria. So I agree with that.
Very good. Go ahead, Ken. You're unmuted, Ken.
Unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'd like to, as we went down one through five, I just have a few comments on each of them that may start some discussion. If you don't mind me mentioning, mentioning them.
You want, you want to tackle one at a time?
Yeah, well, we could tackle it one at a time if you'd like, yeah, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
So so on on the first one, retail sales, land uses and stuff, I'm curious as to what the other councils would think on allowing the potential of allowing a testing facility, which is, I believe, would be more of a closed-type facility, it's not open to the public, it's just an area, it'd be more of a a industrial-type business where they would actually be testing certain products. I believe, Larry, is there, are there any in the state yet, one or two maybe?
My understanding is there's only one currently, and maybe, maybe Attorney Costigan knows something other than that. But I understand that there's one in Elliott, and that the expectation is that there will be a demand for additional going forward.
So my thought on something like that, Sean, would be that if we were to allow it, I don't think that's necessarily would affect much of an area, and if that was allowed in the industrial area, would be all by itself, it's not surrounded directly with any other type of business generally, or a, more importantly, any residential area. But a testing facility doesn't impact anything and may actually help bring some business into town that way. Just a thought.
I would agree, Ken, and I actually, I'd like to see the ordinance cover all of these topics for us, so we're not revisiting an ordinance once we have to, once we've recreated it. You know, I like to, I like the cultivation part, I like the testing part, and I, you know, the manufacturing part, and obviously the sale part. So I'd like to see the ordinance encompass all of that.
Okay.
Personally, but it's just a thought. I know there's a lot, a lot under each category to learn about, so.
Well, I believe the medical and the recreational would probably fall pretty close to the same. In my mind, I could be off base on that. And then a testing facility, like I say, it's not open to the public, it's just a place where they test certain products or whatever they test them for. But I had also heard about, I knew that I'd heard about one in town, I couldn't remember where it was at. I mean, heard about one in the state, but I couldn't remember where it was at. But I, my thought also was that there's probably going to be more of a call for that, and I don't see an impact on anything at a local level to to impact any particular part of town by having that, if it was an industrial area.
Agree. Any other thoughts from council on that? First topic. Okay.
So then, my thought on the second one, on on where they should be allowed. Right now, we already have it on medical marijuana, and it's set up, I believe that was for medical marijuana uses and stuff in the GB1 in the industrial districts. And I just think that it'd be a lot easier and a lot, I think, I think it would probably fit in better if we just kept it the retail in that area and didn't allow it in the downtown one or two area. I've had, and as you've seen, some of the emails we've gotten, I've actually had calls on the same thing, that most people would prefer to keep it out of that area. And to keep it into the area that was already discussed on the medical marijuana through the GB1 and industrial district, which gives plenty of room in town to have it. And it doesn't impact any surrounding downtown businesses where families could be walking by, where they're exposed to something they may not want to be generally. There's a lot of traffic going up and down Old Orchard Street, East and West Grand Avenue, where if there was stores that were there, that, I mean, I'm concerned about the impact it may have on our tourist tourism business. So I would prefer to see that stay in the GB1 and the industrial districts.
Okay, council, other thoughts? Go ahead, Jay, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. I I had, I jotted down a couple of questions, and that was one of my questions almost word for word, is why would we not want recreational storefronts in the same zones as the medical marijuana? Just seems to me that that would, that would work out the best.
So you'd like to restrict it to those areas as well?
GB1 and industrial, yeah.
Yeah.
If that's, that's where they're allowed now.
Correct. So you don't have any interest in expanding that area, is what my question is to you?
As far as the downtown area, I I, I'm sure you guys too, all received emails and phone calls. They, a lot of people don't want to see it in the downtown area. So I'm just taking that into consideration. So, yeah, I I would just assume see the GB1 and the industrial zone.
Okay. So I'd be open to, just from from my perspective, I'd be open to exploring other zones with this. And I guess I defer to the town's attorney on on some input with this, as far as how we set, how we create the ordinances and how we want the storefronts represented and how the public perception would be if, based on the ordinance. Our ordinances can pretty much regulate the appearance of any any storefront that we want. And in most cases, it does. And I'm not picking on tattoo parlors, but that was one of the hotter topics in town when tattoo parlors wanted open and the town's forefathers had some concerns about the appearance and the perception of that tattoo shop. So I think this kind of mirrors a little bit of that scenario, and I just, I'd be open to that if we could create ordinances that would help protect the neighboring stores and the tourists and the general public as well. So that's, that's just a thought, but again, it's how we create the ordinances and what we want to do with them after the fact. This is my thought on that. I'm not, I'm not closed-minded to to expanding those two zones for this. Mike, did you have anything on that, or Louise?
I, I would just say that I received about eight calls from residents who knew that we were going to be discussing this tonight. And basically, what I surmised is they hoped that there would not be any, six of them were not in favor of it at all, but that recognizing that something probably will pass. They were hoping that the town would limit the number of operations to two. And they favored a lottery. They were concerned about the cost to the police department for making sure to the adherence to the rules. And another major concern was odor management.
Good points, yeah, thank you for that.
Sean, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ken, Mike, go ahead.
So I I think we're at a real early point to be trying to rule out whether we would expand this or not. I've received the emails as well. You know, so, but at this point in time, I'm not prepared to make a decision that we're going to rule out. I don't know where we're going to get tonight with this. I I personally think we need to briefly touch on the five subjects so we can start adhering to some of what, what's going on with this, because tonight is the first I've seen of the five questions that Jeffrey has presented us, so I really haven't had a chance to sit down and go over that. We do know that we've had a few applicants from the downtown district that have been following this right along now for probably a year, some of them even more. So that's my thought on that. And I'm I'm kind of looking forward to hear from legal on zoning aspects, and I'm real interested in hearing about the lottery stuff if I could. Because I thought the lottery was I'll, I'll use the word not correct in Portland, I thought for some reason that failed in Portland, and you couldn't do it that way, but I could be wrong. So I'll, I'll stand by listening.
Chair O'Neal. When, when council is ready, I'm, I know that Attorney Costigan can speak to the selection pieces of the lottery piece, and also a little bit about what Portland, the direction Portland went, was pretty different from what other communities did. So when you're ready for that. You're muted there, Chair. Chair O'Neal, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, now would be a good time to have that happen, and we would like to welcome the town attorney, Mary Costigan. Well, thank you for your time this evening.
Great, sure. Hi, everybody. So I've been listening, and I just want to add a few things to think about, very high level. One is that, so since the time that Old Orchard added marijuana production facilities to your ordinance, the legislature, the legislature changed the statutes, as you know, in a way that created the need for communities to opt in. And they need to opt in on eight different categories. So you should keep those eight categories in mind during these discussions, and I'll lay them out for you here. Under medical, the four categories are caregiver retail store, registered dispensary, marijuana testing facility, and marijuana manufacturing facility. So in order to have any of those in town that were not grandfathered prior to, it was December of 2019, you will need to opt into one or all or none of those categories for medical. The statute does not create an opt-in or out for medical cultivation, but most towns also create that as a separate category so that you can regulate it. Your production facility is generally a cultivation facility, although the definition also includes processing. So you probably want to modify that category and definition to better line up with the state statute. Moving on to adult use, the four categories are marijuana store, cultivation facility, testing facility, and products manufacturing facility. I've seen some towns list, and you should really use all the definitions from the state statute, so everything is very clear, because it's such a need to opt in or out. I've seen some towns list all of them and then just group them as marijuana business and not really care about what it is and where it goes, and whether it's medical or whether it's adult use, they just kind of group them all into marijuana business. Sometimes the stores themselves are just grouped in, so there's different ways to draft your ordinance if you are not necessarily caring that much about the distinction between adult use and medical, or you do, you can, but there's all different ways to do that. With regard to the where, Chair O'Neal brought up the question as to how far the ordinance can go in kind of regulating what the stores look like, and you absolutely have the ability to have design guidelines on the stores. I mean, keep in mind that you're starting from a point where you can absolutely prohibit these, right? So opting in, but putting a lot of regulation around it, you're, you're allowed to do that. So if you want to put design guidelines around stores that want to be in the downtown, if that's where you get to, but if you're going to be in the downtown, you have to do X, Y, Z, then you can, then you can do that. The, how many? The, the one, Rockland did something a little unique, and I don't know if it'd work in Old Orchard, but it may, if you're talking about caps. They have a cap, but only on stores, they didn't cap the other facilities. And they capped them three per zone in which they were permitted. So in other words, they didn't want to just have, you know, five allowed and then have all five go into one area, they wanted to spread it out among the city a bit. So they, they had a smaller cap, but spread it out, so they didn't concentrate in one area, so that's something to think about. The selection process, what, you mostly see lotteries. What Portland did was they did a kind of a weighted criteria selection process, which got some negative feedback, because it was seemed, it was perceived as onerous and subjective. I don't actually have direct knowledge of how it played out in the end. Rockland, I just called the negative feedback as it was being created. Rockland has a lottery system, they set it up. It was not actually triggered, because they, because they spread out the cap, nobody actually, they didn't reach the point where they needed to have a lottery. Their selection, their minimum that you have to meet to be part of the lottery is a conditional license from the state and a, an application for conditional use approval from the planning board that was deemed complete by staff. So they, you'd have to get to the level of actually applying for approval in order, and have a complete application ready to go in order to participate in the lottery in Rockland, so that's one idea. And then performance, performance standards, there's a, there's a wide array of things. And then performance, performance standards, there's a, there's a wide array of things that can be done. There's a lot of performance standards already in state law, but I think Larry hit all the categories. The one thing I will add that you also want to think about is application fee. Louise mentioned the added costs of administering this, the monitoring of facilities, but there's also, there's added costs and a lottery and all the other administrative tasks that come along with that. And I'm sure your staff will be able to gather up the different application fees that are out there among the state. There, there are rather high application fees around because there is quite an administrative cost that goes along with the system.
Excellent. Very good point. Go ahead. No, sorry.
With respect to the lottery system, you and I were talking earlier today, you had talked, you mentioned the fact that an advantage of doing a lottery is that it is the, is obviously the most objective approach that you can take. So there's, there's no room in there for saying, well, you gave a license to this business owner or this applicant because they were, they've been in the town longer. Or you gave it to this applicant because they're so-and-so's brother-in-law or anything like that. It's, it's the most objective when you're talking about a limited supply of.
Correct.
Portland, as Mary was talking about, got into trouble. Counselor to Signan was not because they chose a lottery, but because they chose a lot of other conditions that were weighted to get sort of credit for certain qualifications that you may bring in that put you in, ahead of another applicant in terms of the scoring, if you want to call it that, or the selection process. That's where they ran into trouble, not just, not the lottery in and of itself.
Through the chair. A question to Mary. In reference to the application fees and the licensing fees, what's the highest and the lowest you've seen so far in the state? Do you have any idea?
Um, I think, I know that, I think Auburn did a $5,000 application fee, I believe. And I don't think there's anything higher than that. I'm not sure about lower. Larry, did you?
Yeah, I do, I did, the, the ones I looked at, the town of Elliott, it was $7,500 for an annual fee. And they had a license, an application fee of $1,500, an initial application fee. And as, as Mary said, Auburn was 5,000. I also think I saw South Portland was $1,400 for an annual fee. So there's a.
So that, that, that application fee is a one-time fee?
The application fee is a one-time fee, yes.
And the license fee would be yearly?
Annually. And, you know, one of the, I think Portland, I don't, for some reason I heard Portland was, was, was fairly high, but I don't know what it is. But, but I do know Elliott's was $7,500 for the annual fee. And I think the question in terms of, of one thing that you're going to want to consider is our business licensing approach is, is to be approved every, you have to renew your app, your license every two years. All the ordinances that I looked at so far anyway, all had annual renewals for their retail stores. So it's one of the things, as you look at this, whether you want to just piggyback it onto our current business licensing approach or do an annual approach is one thing to consider. And then the other point that I just wanted to bring up.
Larry, if we did it, if we did it annually, would that be any legal drawback to the way we do our licensing now?
No, you would just make a differentiation in the ordinance for that particular licensing if you decided to do that.
And through the chair.
Go ahead.
Mary, on the annual or bi-annual fee, is there a cap that you, that has to be put on that? Is it, I mean, is there, is there, is there amount that is like the highest you can go? Is there some set criteria guideline we have to follow to do that?
Yeah. So the criteria in setting a fee is that fees have to be necessary to cover administrative costs before they start to become a tax, right? So you have to make sure you don't cross that line in where it starts looking like, more like a tax and not a fee. So you have to justify your fee by the administrative costs of the program.
And there are guidelines to follow on that or is that arbitrary?
It's, 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 well, it's not arbitrary, but it's, it just depends on the number of facilities, the amount of regulations you have, the amount of inspections, all of the work that will go into doing it. I mean, if you're only going to allow one store, you know, they're going to have to bear the entire burden. If you're going to allow 20 stores, you're going to spread that out, you know? So it's really going to, you have to really analyze the cost of administering the program and then determine what you need to be able to pay for that.
Okay, thank you.
I will add really quickly, if you don't mind. I just, I, I couldn't recall because it happened in the fall when we were all, we're still all in the middle of lots of craziness, but I couldn't recall what happened in Portland. The court actually struck down Portland's selection criteria system. And so Portland threw it out the window and just accepted all the applicants that were ready to go. And I think they're going to revisit their criteria moving forward, but they lost in court.
Through, through the chair. In terms of the fees, I just, it really has to, as, as Mary was discussing, it really has to be defensible. So if, if you put a $50,000 annual licensing fee on to a retail store license and you get a challenge from a retail store saying, you justify that, then you have to justify it and then potentially end up in court trying to prove why $50,000 is a reasonable amount for the cost to the community. I think one of the, perhaps misperceptions in, in the public anyway, is that having a retail marijuana stores or other marijuana facilities is going to be a profit, something that the community can make money off of and, and get revenue from, I should say? And that's just not the case. The sales tax revenue for retail stores all goes to the state. So there's, there is no, other than the usual revenue sharing, there is no separate allocations to communities where a store would be located.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Mike.
So how do we determine then, if, if I said $20,000 for the sake of the conversation for an application fee and, and $10,000 a year for a license? Just to throw something out there so we can start a discussion on, where do we go to figure this out on what we can get away with?
Well, I would, I would go and, and sit with the staff and talk about, okay, what's involved in, in regulating these facilities? And how much time is it going to be for staff? And what other type, what kind of expenses do you anticipate we're going to have? And we would tally those up and that would be a basis for determining what a fee should be.
So if I threw those numbers out there, any, what, what's the input on that?
Well, I think we can look at what other communities have done and say that they've, they've kind of set a, a reasonable bar. There's a range there. And I don't think you, you want, I don't think any community wants to be way off the charts from what other communities are doing, where you're sticking out like a sore thumb kind of a thing. So I would say that the existing fee structures, and we can certainly, there are other communities out there that have set fees and we can get a list of what those fees are and kind of put them out there to you so you see what the range is.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, add something to that quickly? Because it, it really is kind of the last question that you ask because you first have to set up the program and then you figure out how much it's going to cost. Because you don't know if you're, if you wind up and you're only going to say, allow five facilities, or you're going to allow 20 and have this complicated lottery system or whatever you come up with, the cost is going to be different. So I would just suggest perhaps establishing the program first and then deciding and figuring out how much it's going to cost. So the last thing.
Through the chair. Going back to Kenny, I guess, your testing facility, Kenny, would that be separate from retail marijuana?
Yeah, yes.
Would that be another store, okay? Would that be another store? Is that, is that included in, well, let me, let me say this this way, okay? So everybody will understand. I don't see there being more than three stores at this point in time, to throw that out for a conversation. Would, would the testing facility be one of those three stores or is that something else that you're thinking about?
So, Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a testing facility has nothing to do with the store because they're not selling the product to the public. So it's not a retail store. It's not any type of a commercial type store. It's a facility that actually tests products that would be for sale. I, I don't know all the particulars with it. Mary can, I'm sure can, can elaborate on that. And while you're throwing, I've already heard two stores, I've, I've heard you say three. I got to be honest with you, I'd be very comfortable with one. But, so, let me throw that one out where I'm at. As far as a testing facility, it's, it's nothing to do with any type of store, so it wouldn't be included in any of that. It becomes a separate type of a business that's closed off to the public. I mean, it's probably, the only public access would be somebody that was going in there to, to, to deal with the, and it would be, actually wouldn't be public. It would be more of a, a business access, right, Mary? With, with a, with a, it's a commercial business that tests. It'd be no different than any other testing facility, only they would be testing marijuana and products rather than food products or something.
Yeah, that's right. They don't sell, they don't sell a product. It's not a retail establishment. It is, it is a laboratory that is.
Thank you, Larry. Yes, a laboratory.
That is, its purpose is to take samples from manufacturers to test the potency of the, their, the THC, and I don't know what else they might be testing, but the characteristics of the product that are publicized by the production facilities to verify what, whether or not they're, they're accurate or not. So it's a very, there's no traffic in and out to speak of. It's a very limited kind of a facility. You, you barely notice it, I think.
Okay, can I follow up? Sean?
I go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, I just wanted, that's what I thought that Kenny was talking about. I just wanted to make sure with that. And I guess so my, my next question might be to the attorney. Can we have just one and what's the legal challenge to having just one?
You can have just one and there's no legal challenge because you can currently have none.
Okay. Thank you.
Other thoughts, council questions?
Through the chair.
Mr. Bean.
So I think the, the, the areas that the council is going to need to really wrestle with, the predominant areas are, how many establishments do you want to have in town? Obviously, where do you want to locate them? Those are, those are sort of the two big threshold questions that you're going to be wrestling with. What zones would you allow them in, so to speak? And then the performance standards that you believe are important to have. Performance standards that you want to have in order to, to create a business that is not in some way offensive to the area surrounding it, I think, is another important piece. And then the license selection process as well, including there, by the way, what role you want, you would want if the planning board to play? Would you have the planning board sort of be a first stop in terms of, of the site plan for a facility? And then from there, go on to the council for consideration of a license or not? So those are things you're going to want to look at as well.
So it's from council, just an inquiry. Is council interested in having staff come up with a draft ordinance surrounding our concerns at this point? Give us a starting point. What's council's desires?
Through the chair. On the performance standards, Larry, would that be something that the planning board should be tackling rather than the council? Where they set performance standards on other businesses and so on and so forth?
Yeah, Mary, you can jump into it, but I, I think most number of communities are having the planning board be involved.
Yes. Okay, so, I mean, I, I think that that would help, I mean, that's kind of their purvey, purview where they, they actually deal with a lot of that stuff and, and take some of the weight off, weight off, weight off of, of us on that. As far as your thought, Sean, and having planning staff something, I, I believe that's probably what we should do. I think Larry was saying that we kind of need to narrow that scope down a little. Is that what you were saying, Larry?
Right.
So, I mean, I, I think we're, you know, we got three stores, two stores and one store, depending on who you, you know, which council you talk to. You've got explore putting in the downtown district to keeping it GB1 and industrial. So I don't know where we go from here on that. I don't know how we, how we narrow that down. Again, my thought was, I know you had mentioned, you know, if somebody's in the downtown district and, you know, that's where they do business now, it doesn't mean that they have to do business in the downtown district, just means that they would have to purchase, rent, lease, build a facility in the GB1 or industrial. I mean, it's, you know, to my thought, I mean, I don't have the desire to open it in a certain zone to accommodate somebody that may be already in that zone that may want to do it. I just think that, you know, I'm, I'm looking for the least impact on the town itself with the amount of people that voted. It did, it did get voted in, but there was also, you know, 2,500 plus that voted about not wanting it all. So I'm trying to ease the impact, allow to go through as we agreed to if it was voted on and voted through, but also ease the impact on the people that didn't want it at all. So rather than, you know, going two or three, that's why I chose one, because one allows for the people to, to purchase what they want and what they voted on, but doesn't impact everybody else by having two or three. Keeping it in GB1 and in the industrial district, it's where it's already at for medical marijuana. So it's not impacting anybody that wouldn't be impacted if it was medical marijuana. So it's allowing people to be able to purchase it in town without impacting businesses in the downtown area that may not want to have a marijuana store next to their ice cream stand or, or their restaurant. So I just think that we have standards already under the GB1 and the industrial for the for the medical marijuana. It'd be a lot less cumbersome on us to have to turn around and deal with it in, in, in other zones. But that's where I'm at, Sean.
I concur, I concur with Counselor Blow's synopsis, based on the conversations that I've had with the residents who called me. Because there is concern that, first of all, we move slowly, that more workshops should be held, that we do this right and get it right and not make decisions by the seat of our pants.
Okay, with that, counsel, I'd like to just mention as part of the record, the emails that folks hear us referencing, the emails that we've received, of record, there have been four. Okay? And one was solely in support of a store in town. The other three would like to see just one store and not in the downtown area. So, and then I have one email that I, paperwork that I've received that is part of the record as well, who does want it downtown and obviously not near churches and schools and things of that nature, wants them limited. But, so the, the support for the different areas is definitely there. But with that being said, I just wanted to reference those and, and those are part of the record. And council does have a copy of our documentation. And council does have a copy of, of the documentation, document that I'm looking at as well. So if this, if I'm comfortable opening up to some questions from the attendees?
One quick, Sean, just through the chair, I have four, not that it matters for more, but four that don't want it in the town. One that does want it in the downtown, and we just received an email that I saw on my phone with somebody else from, from another resident that doesn't have an issue with it being in the downtown. So it's, it's four against the two-four, so FYI, that's all. Okay. I'm just straightening it out, listen, I'm just straightening it out.
I'm going by the documents I have in front of me, Ken. I'm not talking about personal emails that I've received.
No, 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 these are the documents I have in front of me that I handed to me today at town hall. That's all, that's what I'm talking about. And, and the other, the other email went to you too, and it's, it's in favor of downtown, so.
Okay, very good. Yeah. Thanks, Ken. With that, counsel, can we open it up to the attendees?
Absolutely.
Are there comments from, or questions from those watching? If you would, just raise your hand, it will, we won't be able to see you, but we should be able to hear you.
Sean.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just for the record, how many people out there, I, I can't, I can't see those people, so.
I see-
How many people are actually attending?
Yeah, I see 15 attendees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Of those 15, I believe, four are staff.
Okay.
Any thoughts, folks, any comments? Mr. Morris?
I'm, I'm not really used to this system, so I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I can, so yeah, proceed, yes, well done.
Well, my name is Peter Morris, Saco Avenue. My parents purchased this property in 1985. I have had my business, The Tax Doctor, in this building for 30 years. My two sons represent the third generation of my family that has enjoyed the use of this building as a residence or a business. Excuse me. The Tax Doctor is one of the few year-round businesses in town. Having been born and raised in Saco, OOB has been a summer playground for my parents, myself and my children for over 100 years. My 68-year-old eyes have seen many changes to the town since I was a kid. In my opinion, the town's goal has been to promote a family-friendly atmosphere. Business property owners have made an attempt to upgrade the facade of their buildings. A variety of businesses have made an attempt to make a go of it here. Property values in the town continue to appreciate. Having said all this, a majority, 62% of the town's residents recently voted to allow adult-use cannabis in OOB. This council has been mandated by this vote to create an, an ordinance that will continue to move OOB into the intended direction of recent years. Due to my familiarity with the town and my dealings in the cannabis industry, I feel that I can offer the council a few suggestions that might aid in this early process of ordinance creation. Number one, the most important factor in the ordinance process is to identify the sensitive uses of the town. For instance, cities such as Portland and South Portland have identified sensitive uses such as schools, daycares, churches, et cetera. The rule of thumb in almost all cases is a 500-foot buffer. Number two, Old Orchard Street should be excluded due to parking issues and an array of other issues. Number three, signage should be addressed, for example, large neon signs with cannabis leaves should be prohibited. Number four, a 500-foot buffer between stores. This will avoid a circumstance that plagues the town currently with one t-shirt shop after another clustered all over the town. Finally, proper zoning, DD1 or DD2 are probably the only two zones that the town should consider. This will avoid anyone with a building along a main roof to open, again, which would create unwanted clustering. Also, the entrance to the city near Dunkin' Donuts should be excluded due to traffic issues that are already existing. Thank you for allowing me to address the council and good luck to you all in crafting this ordinance.
Well said, Mr. Morris, thank you for weighing in on this, and we appreciate you. Your, your patience with us, as you've been with us since the very beginning of this, it's been years. So thank, thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to speaking with you some more on this issue.
Now, there's, there's two of us here, should, if, if a person wants to comment, should I just raise my hand after someone else goes?
Please do, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll send a, I guess, a more succinct letter after this. I drafted a testimony, but I wasn't sure how this was gonna proceed the night of this workshop. Um, I'll just keep it brief. My name is Tom Morris, I'm a resident of Old Orchard Beach, I sit on the zoning board in the Conference of Plan Committee. Uh, my work on these boards over the past several years has given me a unique perspective of where the town of Old Orchard currently stands and where it hopes to be, especially in regards to lean use and non. Ultimately, I think the town of Old Orchard should take its time to ensure that a well-thought-out ordinance that mutually benefits the town is put into place. I recommend that the town start small and expand its marijuana program later if needed. Two to three stores would more than cover the likely demand for the town. Um, I do not recommend a lottery to pick these businesses as it does not guarantee the most qualified applicants. Also, if the town wants to require a conditional license to apply, it must be tied to a physical location in Old Orchard Beach. Uh, the state does not require a physical location for a conditional license. Oh, and then one of the most important parts of this drafting process, which you guys have already touched upon, is, is obviously figuring out what zone or what zones you want to put this in, and then identifying what sensitive uses that you'd like to keep this away from. Uh, oh, in our opinion, we think that the DD2 would be the, would make the most sense for this business. Uh, this zone is a commercial district that acts as an extension to DD1 and emphasizes business over residential. This zone already includes a Walgreens, which is the only downtown business that sells both liquor and prescription drugs, as well as Marinol, which is a synthetic man-made marijuana pill. A marijuana business in this zone would be close enough to downtown to take advantage of foot traffic without it actually being on Old Orchard Street. While GB1 allows medical marijuana stores, uh, that, that zone faces a challenge with adult use as there's no foot traffic and no public parking, which would add additional strain to the congested traffic patterns already existing. Um, if the town is looking for an ordinance around the state of Maine to use as a reference or template, I would highly recommend you start with South Portland. They did a good job identifying where they wanted the, their stores and what performance standards they required for prospective applicants. Um, I realize that we're at the very beginning of this process and I look forward to these discussions to come. Uh, I would like to make myself a resource to you as the process moves forward. Thank you.
And we thank you for that as well, we'll certainly reach out. Other thoughts or questions, folks? Neil, yeah, Neil, go ahead. It shows that you're muted, Neil, I can't hear you.
I just unmuted.
Got you, I got you.
So currently, medical marijuana can be sold in what district in town only?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Retail medical marijuana is not a permitted use in the town, however, medical marijuana through a registered caregiver can be sold. Um, and I believe, Jeffrey, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of a registered caregiver, is it limited, it's, it's, it actually can be done anywhere in town, is that correct by state law? Or, or Mary, Jeffrey?
Sure, you have, uh, medical marijuana production facilities that are, the facilities that are permitted in the GB1 and the industrial. So it does not include sale, it just means, it just, it's essentially medical marijuana cultivation.
But registered caregivers are able to sell to their caregiver clients.
Correct, yes, they can sell to patients, they can't sell out of a storefront unless they are permitted.
But they can do that anywhere and any, as long as it's their-
Out of their home.
Their residence.
Correct.
Okay, and, and so the question is, what does it take? Can I just knock on somebody's door who's selling marijuana and say, "Sign me up to be a caregiver and I want to buy some pot right now"? That's what's going on. So they're not, they have no pre-existing, you know, relationship. They just knock on the door and say, "Hey, you guys sell pot? Yep, come on in, sign up, you'll become one of our ca, we'll be the caregiver for you."
That's an issue, Neil, that's something that we can look into.
It, it actually isn't, it's an issue that's at the door of the state. The state established the rules that, with respect to caregivers and who they can sell to. Personally, I find them extremely loose, too loose, uh, too open-ended. And I've registered, I've made my concerns. I have made those concerns directly to the state a couple of years ago on more than one occasion, but that's where the state has gone. So, uh, Mr. Weinstein, there's really nothing the town can do about that, those rules. It has to be changed at the state level.
Well, why can't the town enact a more strict ordinance like they can on liquor sales in locations?
Because that's not permitted under the state for registered caregivers.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Any other thoughts, folks, questions, concerns? Seeing no other hands being raised. Closing thoughts from council?
Through the chair.
Mr. Mead.
Uh, just would ask the council when you would like to schedule another workshop. I heard that you would like the town, at least one counselor, saying that you would like to have a draft of an ordinance. The sort of bones of an ordinance put in front of you. And and I'm assuming we would want to do that, you would want to do that, excuse me, in a, in a workshop setting at a future date?
I would prefer this, this setting, I'm not sure where our COVID guidelines will be at that point, but this seems to be rather successful, um, even with the unknowns. So if we need to continue in this fashion, we certainly will. About a month from today, is that a reasonable amount of time to allow staff to give us the?
Yeah, yes, it is, certainly, it's very reasonable.
If we did, I'm just looking at a calendar now, give me one second, I got it, yep. Our meeting is February 2nd, a regular council meeting, how about if we did February 9th? Tuesday, February 9th?
Hey, Sean, through the chair.
Go ahead, Ken.
The 9th, I'm flying back from Florida, I'm going down to visit my parents, so I won't be available on the 9th. I'll be available after the 9th.
Do we do the 11th?
Thursday? Do you February 11th, everyone?
That is, you know, that's a planning board meeting night, 10th might be a better night. Not because of council chambers so much as just because of participation by people who are interested in them.
Understood, especially with Jeffrey, yeah.
Counselor Blow, when do you get back?
I have the 9th, so I'm, I'm fine for the 10th.
We'll do Wednesday, the 10th, everybody in agreement with that date?
And, and, I think, I, I do, we did have 20, I see, well, we had almost 27 people participating tonight, so it, and there may be that many the next time, so I, I agree with you, I think this format is helpful to that because of the council chamber's restrictions in terms of number of people at this time.
Perfect. And again, well done putting this together and seeing this happen this evening. On behalf of Jen and Fran and Tommy and you, counsel, we thank you all for attending, thank you for your time.
Through the chair, Sean.
Go ahead, Mike, yeah.
So I, I, I'm not sure what, what directive is to the planning board at this point in time. Uh, we haven't determined the zones yet, and we haven't determined the number of stores, so what exactly are we asking them to come backwards?
Right now, just the basic ordinance-
I'm not sure that we're ready for the planning board to draft anything at this point.
No, Counsel, to significant, the, the reference to the planning board was just that that their, the meeting date of Jan, of February 9th or February 11th, excuse me, wouldn't work because it coincides with-
No, I, I, I thought, I thought there was some directive here for planning to draw, to come up with some kind of a a draft for the council for the next meeting.
And that's just, that's staff.
Okay, well, so what is, what is the directive staff at this point in time, I guess is what I'm wondering, because I don't really see that we've accomplished much tonight.
Well, well, so my thought with that, Mike, is, and it was actually-
I just don't want them to, I don't want them to spend time, you know, one store, five stores, we, we haven't decided that, we haven't decided districts, yet or zones. So I don't want to figure one zone, come back only in the GB1, you know?
So, so we can add that to the ordinance, I'd like to see a bare-bones ordinance, something self-sufficient by Mr. Morris. So we can have something to start with, and right now we have nothing in front of us to work with other than just the documents and the emails we're receiving from our constituents, so.
I said that earlier, I, I struggled with that earlier.
Yeah, so that's asking for that, that's just to me, my next step, and then we can add the zones and the numbers af, after that, but I'd like to add a point for it.
Okay, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I guess, to counsel with that, I, I would consider, I'd also to consider the numbers that they're, they're set on, and if there's room for adjustment to any of those numbers, and if, you know, just be open-minded to things, or think about where we really, really, really want this to happen and how we want it to look. Um, I think we can do it, and it can be very professionally done well, so I, I have no fears with that. And no matter what zone we choose to put it in, or zones, I should say. So with that being said, I'd just like to have the ordinance in front of us to give us a starting point. So I'd keep that in mind, the zones and the areas and, you know, the impacts of the areas that you, where we might consider it, that's all, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you as well. With that being said, all set, counsel?
Good night.
Thanks for joining, once again, good to see you. Have a good evening, thank you, folks, thanks for joining, have a great evening.